is now meeting in regular session for July 21, 2020. Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Treese.
Here.
Vice Chair Scoughton.
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here. The first item on our agenda is oral communications. And as I have been doing since the end of August or so, I've been highlighting first our summary of constituent communications. We have three different weeks of reports. And really, over the last three weeks, the number of emails that we have received for the board has been in the teens number, so 20 or fewer, which is quite a step down compared to where it had been back in April and May. And we really had to put some surge effort in from staff to help us with all of that and make sure that constituents were getting timely responses, but more importantly, the benefit of accurate and timely information. So we continue to be grateful for that. Our staff has continued to also handle incoming telephone calls very well and ably. And I appreciate that because some of the phone calls that they have received, people are quite heated and emotional about these subjects, and our staff has been very accommodating. So I wanted to highlight that. But next, during this oral communication, this is an opportunity for members of our community to address the board on any topic not on the agenda for up to two minutes. Mr. Moss, do we have anyone signed up today?
We do, Madam Chair. We have one person, Brenda Lutu Clayton, which I will allow to speak right now. Can you hear us, Brenda?
I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I have a three-phased question for you guys. Did we, I was on most of the meetings, but I have missed a couple. Did we successfully decouple from the tri-county entity? And Clackamas County seemed to try to move into phase two and was denied moving forward. And I'm just wondering if we, as Washington County, once we meet the requirements, will continue to move forward in a timely manner? And specifically because of occupancy requirements and some of the rules regarding for small businesses, what they are allowed either by appointment only or how far apart tables or chairs or stations are? And then third is in businesses in California, specific salons are now given this huge mandate that they can do, they're told to actually do business outside, which involves a lot of sanitation issues and issues with chemicals. So are we anywhere close to that? I know our governor tends to follow guidelines from Washington and California, and do you guys have any insight to that?
So Brenda, this is an opportunity for us to hear from our community as opposed to engaging in Q and A with our community. But I do want to respect that you are making an effort to follow this topic. So a couple of things. I would urge you to continue to listen or view this meeting so that you have the benefit of the COVID presentation we're about to get. But I will take the opportunity to try and address a few of your questions for a bit of closure for you right now. Did we decouple? No, we are not able to decouple. The governors made that pretty clear. With regard to phase two, what you'll hear more of is the numbers of cases throughout Washington County. We continue to have increased cases as well as increased hospitalization while there is copious data available to you right on our website and the OHA website. The bottom line, in my words, due to these community results, we are not successful or not successfully operating in phase one, and we're really working to focus our efforts so that we will be able to get to success in operation in phase one and also be supportive of getting kids back to schools. With regard to salons and California having new protocols for operating outside, the state is looking at many different things. I mean, the state of Oregon. So there isn't anything, any kind of direction we can give you on that. And so we'll see how things move forward with the state. But we clearly know that we're having problems operating under phase one and are going to be making some additional recommendations to the governor, which will be highlighted in the presentation that we're about to go through. So thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. Kevin, do we have any other constituents at this time?
We have no one else, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. I forgot to write up my totals. We have about 20 items on our consent agenda. Two items under minutes, four items under clean water services, three items under land use and transportation. That includes some added links to the bid award memos that were not available on our first posting of the agenda but have been made available since. One item under county administrative office, one item under the Office of Community Development, which has been revised for further clarity, and then an added item, item J, under Health and Human Services. What are the wishes of the commission per the consent agenda?
I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next up, we have a presentation, a COVID-19 update. Back in June, by the end of June, we were hoping to move to having a little less frequent communication on COVID, but this virus has gotten the better of us, I'm afraid. So.
So.
Wow.
Wow.
It's your Board of Commissioners meeting now featuring sound effects. So we're back to essentially getting updates per weekly and so forth, or yeah, weekly. So today, we have Marnie Kyle, our Director of Health and Human Services, and our chief epidemiologist, Kimberly Rep. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and board. Marnie Kyle, Director of Health and Human Services. And we're, I'm really thrilled that Dr. Kimberly Rep. was able to join us today. She's our chief epidemiologist. And as I looked at the data this week and talked with Kim about it, I told her it reminded me a little bit of being back in my statistics classes where when I'm talking to the professor, I could really understand it and I could repeat back. And I thought, well, I could come and parrot what I learned to you all. But as soon as you asked me a question, I would be underwater, out of my league. And so Kim did offer to come and explain this data to you because it's really important data, and I want to make sure that you have all your questions answered thoroughly and competently. So that's why I've asked Dr. Rep. to join us today. One thing that I do need to say is that last week, Commissioner Rogers asked me about how we define COVID deaths. And I need to let you all know that I made a mistake. And what I described to you was incorrect. I was describing how we normally report deaths using the primary reason for the death that's based on some medical coding. So Dr. Rep. is also going to explain that and make sure that you thoroughly understand how we're counting deaths and how that impacts Washington County's numbers. Once Dr. Rep. is finished, then Philip Bransford is going to give you a short presentation on our communication strategies because we've talked a lot about the public health strategies, and those are really important, but we've talked about them week after week. I think you have them down. You might even be close to being contact tracers yourself. But I think one of the most important strategies that we have is communication with our public, and so Philip's going to take the lead on that. So I am going to step back and turn it over to Kim, and then when she's done, Philip will take the stage.
But I bet we're going to have some questions for you too.
I'm not going far.
Don't go too far away.
I won't go far.
Okay, if I'm actually more than six feet away from everyone, I'm going to take this off. So today, I'm going to walk through all of our data and answer any questions you might have about any of it. May I have the next slide, please? Now, public health doesn't get a lot of conspiracy theories, so when we actually do get one, it's pretty exciting. And this one is about the definition of a COVID-related death. Now, if I told you that a death was COVID-related, any normal person would be like COVID caused the death or is related to the death. For some reason, our federal partners have made a definition of a COVID death that is essentially if you had a positive COVID test and then you died for any reason within 60 days, it counts as a COVID-related death. Why? Completely unclear. But that is not the natural definition of what we count as a related death in public health. May I have the next slide, please? What we count in public health is the true definition. So this means a board-certified forensic pathologists or a physician listed COVID on the death certificate as having been related to the death, so what a normal person would consider COVID-related. All the deaths reported in Washington County, 21, we had one this morning, and the death certificate isn't signed, but as of yesterday, 21. All 21 of those deaths were truly COVID-related. So the numbers that we are giving you are the more traditional definition of COVID-related and not using the federal definition of COVID-related. Does that make sense? No?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you, Marty, for bringing that issue up. My comment was, I get lots of questions, like all the rest of this board does, from constituents and others. And it was reported in some states that if someone died, it could be a motorcycle accident, it could be a heart attack, could be pneumonia, it could be anything, and they tested them then at that point, and they were COVID-positive, that the death certificate would list COVID-positive. And then that's a question I asked of Marnie, and she said, no, that's not correct, which I spread all over, so now I guess I got to correct her a little bit. But so can you tell me the difference, what I'm trying to know about between the federal definition and what you're doing?
So the death certificate, an actual death certificate, has to be signed by a physician or pathologist. That is the official record. That is the end of the deal. That is the legally binding medical record. That's everything. The CDC does not have the power or authority to modify death certificates. They can't do that. But what they can do is they can say, this person had a positive COVID test and then got in a car crash. And even though COVID is not on the death certificate, they can still count that as COVID-related at the federal level. That's something they're doing. But if we actually just look at death certificates, which is what we do, they're legit. It's actually was on the death certificate. It's not some other made-up definition.
Thank you. That dispels a lot of.
Absolutely.
Voodoo comments.
Oh, I hear you. I totally hear you. Well, and you know, there's, I haven't spoken to a single epidemiologist that thinks it's reasonable to have someone die in a car crash and count as a COVID death. Like, that just does not make a lot of sense. So worry not. We take our numbers seriously here, and they actually represent true COVID-related deaths. Next slide, please. So a key part of our system is our hospital capacity. So these, at the very, very bottom in pink is Washington County, and you can see a little golden bar at the bottom. That little golden bar is how many ICU beds we have available in the county at this moment. That number is less than 10. So right now, we have fewer than 10 ICU beds available. Next, please. Now, oh, yes.
I thought through all of our situation reports that there are 101 ICU beds available in total in Washington County at any given time. That's the total market. What, if I heard you correctly, you said something along the lines of with the gold here, there's only 10 now available?
That is correct. Adult ICU beds, as in open, empty, able to take a patient in Washington County specifically only, it's fewer than 10. Now, the question is, how many COVID beds are being taken up in the ICU? So how many COVID patients? We have about four patients in Washington County on average each day using an ICU bed. So with our current burden of approximately four COVID patients and ICU beds and an open capacity of fewer than 10, that's where we're sitting right now in terms of burden for disease in the county in terms of what kind of influx could we take? Now, you would need to speak to a hospitalist to say if they are comfortable with nine open beds, but as supervising the medical examiner's office, I can tell you that's two car crashes away from being full. So that is not a great number. Now, there are over, if you count the entire state, now, we have a regional approach, so we can share beds with Multnomah, they can come over to ours, we can use Clackamas', that's fine. But in the entire state, there are about 115 ICU beds open right now. Yes. Adult ICU beds.
So I'll just observe that this is more startling than I had internalized from the situation reports, which is why I did a timeout there. Big gulp. Okay, I knew hospitalizations were up, and I knew Bend was having a problem.
Yes.
I just didn't realize the problem was acute here in Washington County as well. Thank you.
And that's why I'm bringing the real deal, for your information and all your questions. So basically, the take-home on our hospital capacity, in the Portland metro, we have 50 beds open, fewer than 10 in Washington County, and about 6% of our existing ICU beds hold COVID-positive patients. Next slide, please. So these are our hospital admissions. So this is simply the count of people that are going into the hospital each day. On the regional side, that's for Multnomah, Clackamas, and Washington County together. And then on the right-hand side, we have Washington County. There's a bar indicating when we entered phase one in Washington County. So our hospitalization admissions are going up. Now, they are not what they were in late March, but that's partially because our health system has figured out how to deal better with COVID patients, and people aren't waiting as long to go to the hospital. But we are having an unfortunate increase in hospitalization admissions in our county and obviously across the region, too. Next slide.
That data is just through June, is that right?
That is through last week. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so June 28 is actually the seven, and then the 14 is the week after that. So, yep. Thank you.
And as a layperson, it was important for me to remind myself that you're just showing the COVID-related.
Uh huh.
So.
Yep.
We know that hospitals have been able to get back to having their non-essential surgeries that we've been telling folks, if you're having a heart attack, don't delay, call 911.
Please, yes.
You're having a stroke.
Yes.
Similarly, call 911. But more and more people are getting out and about compared to our stay-home, save-lives aggressive response back in March into April. So more people are getting around.
Yes.
And as you note, heart attacks, strokes, car crashes, motorcycle crashes, they happen.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, my biostatistic professor always said, a number without context is meaningless. And I wanted to show you how our metrics that the OHA is looking at have changed over time. So simply put, green is good, red is bad. The horizontal line is when we entered phase one. Now, if you eyeball this, I see more red under the line than above the line. But we're going to go through each of these and explain what they mean and what they don't mean. The indicator on the far right-hand side is basically a babysitter indicator, making sure that we follow up with our cases within 24 hours. That's been green the entire time. We've nailed that, so I'm not super worried about that. If that drops at all, it's because we don't have enough capacity. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go through each of these and talk about how we flip-flop. So you see uptrend, no-trend, uptrend. I'm going to actually show you the data, what's happening to get those metrics. Next slide, please. Percent positive COVID tests. Now, this is one that usually confuses a lot of people. So sometimes people say, well, more people are getting tested, so we're going to have more positive tests. Absolutely. That's completely true. That dark gray bar indicates the total number of tests that we're having. Okay? So more people are getting tested. That's good. What we don't want to change is the percent of positive tests. The difference between 6,000 tests with 4% positivity and 5% positivity is just under 450 cases in a week. So that one percentage point difference is an astronomical difference in the amount of cases in the county. So this is why we look at the percent positive of our tests. And ideally, we would like this under 5%, and really, really ideally, we would like it down closer to 1%. Percent case increase over time. Now, this is a fun one to math, let me tell you. All right. So this is one of the ones where we've gone up and down and up and down, and the most recent one was green. So what this indicator is looking at is between these bars, which are our case counts, how big does that percent change? As you can see with the red arrow, that is an increase in our percent of cases, right? And if you go all the way to the end, you see that green arrow. So we're getting a downtrend, so it's green. But if you look, our case counts are still astronomically high. So it's not necessarily worth celebrating that little dip if you look at the context of where we have come from. So that's why we go, each time it goes up, we get a red, and if we have a little bit of a blip down, and by the way, for this next week, it's already gone higher than the two bars before. So that's why these flip-flop back and forth every week, and that's why it's important to look at how we're doing over time. Percent of sporadic cases. So when we interview a case, we ask them all their contacts. We ask where they went, I mean, to use a rural term, we bird-dog them really hard. I mean, we get all their household informations, anything that they will give us, we ask. And if, in the event that a person refuses to give us information, if they were at a party, we'll likely get it anyways from the other people who are there. Sporadic cases mean we could not figure out where that person got exposed. They didn't have a barbecue, they didn't have any sort of point event that we could link to any other case known in Washington County or the tri-county area. That is not, so the higher the percent of sporadic cases, the more community transmission is happening. So that's why we kind of want to watch that one very closely. So as you can see, we've got the line for phase one, and every single week, our percent of sporadic cases has increased. So going over our metrics, where we're at right now, the most recent restrictions made by the governor, it's too early to see if those are going to have effect on our numbers. The incubation period is 14 days, so it's going to be a little bit before we can see that. The demographics of our cases are changing significantly. A significant majority of our cases now are people in their 20s. This is not how we started. We started in our elderly and our working age, and now it's switched significantly to younger people. The Oregon Health Authority reports business outbreaks on their website if you meet five or more cases. Well, the actual definition is two, and we've had over 90 of them. So we are having a tremendous amount of business outbreaks. And like Marnie said earlier, this is not necessarily businesses that interact with the public. This is like warehouses and people that are working close together, like on a line. So our businesses are having a significant issue with cases. Our hospital capacity, in my opinion, is getting a little low, and I think that, that's kind of the deal-breaker in all of this, because if our hospitals can't handle what we're going to dish out, then we've got a real significant problem, and if we wait until they're full, it's too late. Because what you're seeing in the hospital today is actually what happened two weeks ago. So I would watch that very closely. Additionally, the healthcare system has done absolutely everything that they can. Public health has done absolutely everything that they can, and how and when this ends now depends on individuals' choices. Thank you.
Can I ask you a real quick question?
Of course.
What's, this can sound silly, but what's the definition of a hospital? There's only.
That's a great question.
It could be lots of different things.
Okay, thank you. That is not, that minutia is why my entire team exists, actually. So what's the definition of hospital? So if I just show up at the ER, that doesn't count. If I go to my primary care physician who happens to be in a hospital, that doesn't count. You actually have to be admitted to the hospital to count as a hospital admission.
How about compoless care facilities?
No, no, that does not count. It's strictly like just regular, non-high-medical-need people getting inpatient admission at a hospital. Yep.
Other commissioner questions? None?
No.
I have one.
Okay.
You talked about 90 business outbreaks.
Yes.
Over what course of time? Is that just in phase one or?
No. Oh, actually, the majority of them, yes. Again, and that's because OHA is saying two cases count as an outbreak, although they only report five cases or more on their website. So there's a lot.
So when you reported on 90, is that Oregon-wide or is that Washington County?
That is just Washington County, and that is just in our businesses.
Got it. Okay. Incredible information. Thank you for helping me better appreciate the data and helped me internalize that we have ICU capacity, big concerns right now, and that overall hospital capacity, that full is too late.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Beck, for Marnie, before we switch over to Philip?
Thank you.
Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Happy to come back whenever you have questions.
Dr. Rep., I appreciate it.
We're emailing.
Please keep up the good work, and thank you for staying healthy.
Thank you.
Hello.
Our public information officer for the county administrative office and the agency as overall as a whole and the Board of Commissioners. I know we've thrown a lot at you over these last few months.
Well, I'm part of a team, and I'm very proud to follow Dr. Rep. and Marnie Kyle for all that they are doing to lead our efforts. There is a cast of hundreds behind each of us. And I'm here, thank you, Chair Philip Bransford, with the county administrative office, just to walk through the paid ad campaign that your board helped us, that direct, I should say, your board directed us back in late May to pursue using CARES Act dollars. And we have some report back to you about that round one, and then some indications here about what we're going to do in the second round. So if I can have the next slide. So as I mentioned, we got kicked off with your leadership in late May. Thanks to help from Clean Water Services, we were able to contract with Colower and Cohen, C plus C for short, really quickly. And they helped us very fast to get a five-week multimedia campaign going, about $100,000 campaign. We came in under that using our CARES Act dollars. Next slide, please. The goals were to shape, reinforce the disease prevention behaviors among Washington County residents. I'll just pause at that because that's the highest bar in my line of work is behavioral change. Awareness is typically where we're operating. Sometimes with respect to a campaign for a candidate or a measure, you might have behavioral change that happens in a single moment with the bubbling in of a vote on a ballot. This is ongoing behavioral cycle for the click-throughs. It has a lot to do, I think, with automated checks of webpages, not necessarily organic experience with people clicking in. But it was the fifth most visited page among the county's webpages. The average time spent on the page is about three minutes, just over three minutes. And you can see as the story of our pandemic unfolds, we had huge interest, lots of volume at the very beginning of the pandemic as we went into the governor's stay-at-home order there right before April. That was our peak in terms of web views. And then it's kinds, people got, and this is my theory, is people got what they needed, and they're hearing, of course, from other sources of information, things flatten out. And then there's this kind of run-up as you get closer to phase one. When is Washington County entering phase one? You know, when is that going to happen? What does that mean? I mean, we've all lived through this experience here in the county government, and so that, those bumps are there. And then way at the tail end, you can see what I think was contributing, you know, contributing factor. a contributing factor from the paid marketing campaign causing those bumps there. Keeping in mind that the, this effort wasn't necessarily built to get people to come to the webpage, we just happened to throw the web link into the content. It was more about viewing those videos, absorbing the information, the guidance, and actually practicing that guidance out on the street. So again, this is, this is interesting, but it's not the, you know, the bottom line of getting the behavioral change. It's just showing how we did with our, our web traffic.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
This is for my edification, because I don't know. If someone visits, leaves it open, and then doesn't revisit for a while, is each time a hit, or is that one hit?
That's a great question. And the way I understand, this is, we're using Google Analytics to get this, is we are able to see when somebody clicks into a page and identify them as, you know, there's a little timer that's counting as, as they're going through. And then we also get to see where they exited. So what was the last page they visited in the county's webs, you know, environment before leaving the site? So I think we are able to net out the, you know, somebody that just visits the page and then forgets and leaves, and their browser's still showing the page up. But I should verify that with our ITS folks to make sure I'm answering that correctly.
Maybe higher if people are keeping that webpage up because they are interested. I don't know.
I don't, I don't know for certain, but I believe that we've netted those numbers out, and I'll, I'll verify that. Next page shows the same kind of thing, only with the Spanish-language COVID-19 page, which was created as we had already launched the paid ad campaign. The numbers are a little bit lower, but they are still encouraging. And I've only seen improvement as far as my, in my view of what HHS has done on the Spanish-language outreach that they've conducted, particularly that very attractive Spanish-language page that they are updating constantly. So just to round this out, next slide. We, in Washington County, have 10 other languages besides Spanish that we consider under the federal regulations are safe harbor languages. And we'll have more information for you that, on that, what that means in a separate conversation about our limited English proficiency, proficiency efforts. But the 10 languages, other languages that we've identified through that research process were also targeted, particularly with our Facebook ads, where Facebook, on the backend, you can calibrate the ad to, to render for those users of Facebook that prefer the, one of these 10 other languages besides English. It's a pretty powerful mechanism for reaching a community that is not preferring English, so long as they are using Facebook, which is another assumption. But we had really interesting, interesting interactions, particularly, I would say, with the Korean, Arabic, let's see, which ones? Vietnamese. There was, just like with our English and Spanish posts, there would be this reaction of lots of comments that would string down from the ad. And those languages that I just mentioned in particular, I thought were compelling. People saying yes, saying I agree, absolutely, and those kinds of reactions. They're saying this in their language, but we're able to see, translated into English approximately, what they're, what they're saying. It felt very good to see that reaction. We tapped into something. Not all of the 10 languages had that same reaction. So we're, Amanda Garcia-Nell and I are interested in keeping tabs with this experience we are having with ads like this in our pandemic era to make sure that we're zeroing in as best we can for outreach to populations that are not, where English is not the way to go. All right, so just to finish off, lessons learned. We had great success, I think, with Facebook, had the widest reach. It kind of gives you a sense of that sharing behavior, which is, I think, where we want to go in our next round. Digital video had the most viewership. Absolutely need to continue with Spanish-language radio, which is a regional reach, by the way. And we did well on awareness, I believe. I think we want to try another approach with respect to behavior change. Try again, a little bit better. So in the next slide, we have what we're talking about regionally here. This time, looking at the social science research, there's a lot of evidence that peer-to-peer influence, social contagion is another way of describing this in the literature, is worth doubling down on here. So emphasizing content, particularly with regard to facial coverings, is part of the conversation, but not forgetting all the other precautions, like the physical distancing and so forth. The call to action is key here to the peer-to-peer influence piece. So not just expecting somebody to absorb the video, but to actually ask them to share this information. And we have some ideas about, you know, hey, what's, what's the best, what's your favorite face covering or mask? What, you know, where do you, where do you hang it when you're not, you know, needing to stay in that mode? Things like that where we can promote a bit more. We are seeing a role for your board and for others, and I think we talked about this a few meetings ago, to help prime the pump, if you will, so that we are, so that when you see these ads, that you are, you are leading by example for our audience and showing you, through your networks, this is the behavior, and I'm exhibiting it right, for you right now. Another piece here that, that needs to be added to this list that I didn't last week is, we're seeing that cohort in the, in the epidemiological information from the state of that younger cohort needing the information and the behavioral change probably more than others. And I think Dr. Rep mentioned that in her presentation. So that 20 to 29-year-old age cohort is going to be a focus. So when I say, what's your favorite, what's your favorite mask? The marketing firm was going, was saying, no, it's going to be something like, which, what's the most rad mask you own, or, you know? And even that sounds like a Gen X term, so I think there must be a better term. But anyway, so the focus is going to be on a younger audience, but there's still going to be the over, it's not going to harm the overarching, you know, broader public messaging that we're trying to do. We are shifting gears, thanks to your, your direction to us, to, to invite the full region, the other two counties in our tri-county region, to participate in the ad buy. Washington County would purchase the ads on their behalf using our COVID, I'm sorry, our CARES Act funds. We're working through how the, how the logistics would play out with that, with respect to adding those two additional counties. But the ad firm would just go ahead and purchase ads within that footprint. There are some economies of scale with respect to the cable and now traditional television ad buys that is, are being proposed for round two, that when you get to the full media market of that nature, you can kind of economize a little bit more. But nonetheless, there would be, you know, under 200,000 is anticipated for that next round of ad buys to, to achieve everything we're talking about. We would continue to emphasize Facebook, digital video, Spanish-language radio. We would continue with the safe harbor languages, particularly under that Facebook, but we're adding, I think that, I think we're at least doubling the number of languages by bringing Clackamas and Mutluma County into, into the fold here with respect to those Facebook ads. And continuing with the Spanish-language radio in, in particular, I think that's proven very successful. Oh, and this is, I put this slide in for Commissioner Therese in particular, so happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments, commissioners?
I have one. And that is, as information has evolved, it's now apparent that maybe diseases is evolving as well. We always--
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Yeah, thank you. Diseases evolve as well. We're always thinking about people who are in senior groups, and now we're talking about people who are much younger than that. How are you, getting it explained to you so that you can give the message out that people don't think, again, that this is some kind of fake news, that I'm 22 years old, that this is only for old people? And so I could have asked that on the other side, but I think you're the public relations guy. How are they explaining it to you that you can articulate that to people who are a little skeptical right now about what's happening?
That's a great question, and I think there's a couple tracks to that. And it's, it's really important to point out, your question allows me the opportunity to point out that this isn't the only game going on. There's, there's lots of outreach going on at the state, you know, regional, local level, beyond just this paid ad campaign. There's earned media and so forth. And in that, in that arena, there's a lot of explanatory information, a lot of detailed information, well beyond a 15-second ad, about why it's important to do these things. So I wouldn't look to the paid ad to necessarily explain the, the depth of the, the causes. And I think what we're trying to do is enact the behavioral change by peers influencing peers. So I think for the younger crowd, hopefully, that, that is a point of leverage. If, if it's, if you're running in a crowd that says, you know what, I'm wearing a mask. I'm going out to the skate park, and I'm going to wear my mask. That, we're understanding over time, has an impact, maybe even more of an impact with a younger age group, we'll find out. But hopefully, that answers your question. Kind of.
Any other commissioners? Well, I want to thank you very much for all this work, Philip. As you have highlighted here, it's been very effective for getting the word out. But our community is large, and it's complicated, and we do need to do another round in order to change the trend of the community spread of this virus here in Washington County and throughout our greater regional community. So thank you for making sure that we're doing so with the best available communication science, and keep up the good work, and let us know how we can help.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Are there any other commissioner comments on our COVID activities? More to come, certainly next week. All right. Thank you, everyone, for staying healthy. We really appreciate it. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is proclamations. Today, we're going to be claiming July 19th through 25th of 2020 as Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervisors Week. I know we have Mr. Steve Berger, the Director of Community Corrections here in the room with us, as well as Lynn Schroder, our Director of Juvenile Services. Would the two of you like to offer a staff report and/or read the proclamation for us before the board adopts it?
Thank you, Chair.
We're happy to see you here physically, in person, healthy. Healthy, wealthy, and wise is what my father would say. And I know you've dealt with a lot, such as early releases of, of folks from the state prison system to community corrections during this COVID public health crisis. And you've been very nimble, as have all of our departments, but you've also been staying healthy. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We both, we've each prepared a short statement. And then, did you want one of us to read the proclamation?
I think that would be wonderful.
Okay. Should we start with our statements?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Trying to keep this down so my glasses don't fog up. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Well, I'm Lynn Schroder, Juvenile Department Director, and thank you very much, Chair Harrington and Commissioners, for having us here today to recognize the work of juvenile justice professionals. These are extraordinary times for all of us, and especially right now for juvenile justice. Not only are staff navigating the maze of how to keep themselves and their families safe amidst the coronavirus, they are also figuring out how to effectively supervise youthful offenders in the community. Our work has not gone away. It's not less important. It's been rearranged. And staff are doing their best to find creative ways to effectively supervise, support youth, and keep our communities safe. What they are addressing is increased levels of despair, anxiety, and alienation in the teens who already struggle with feeling disenfranchised. Now they're doing this with fewer resources. Our juvenile justice professionals care deeply about the youth and families and victims we work with. They're fixers, they're motivators, they're encouragers. They connect youth and parents with mentors, counselors, school and job opportunities. They mediate youth and parent conflicts. Who of us wants to do that? They creatively engage youth in ways to learn and grow, and they then become the disciplinarian when it's necessary for community safety. This work has never been easy, and it's a bit more challenging now. Youth of color continue to be disproportionately represented in our juvenile justice population. Racial injustice, oppression, and exclusion for opportunities are not new experiences for these youth and their parents. When at their best, our staff can courageously listen and skillfully support the youth to voice their feelings and experiences and help them find the courage to keep trying and to try better. Our staff are working diligently to connect youth with services and caring adults that increase their skills, build their hope, build their resilience. And our staff knows it's not more days in detention or more youth committed to the correctional facility that will keep our communities the safest. It's through the work they do daily to change lives and build hope. As challenging as this work is, it's deeply rewarding, too. And when a youth who has struggled his entire childhood with school graduate, with school, when he finally graduates from high school, our staff celebrates. When a youth who has been discouraged, angry, resistant, says they feel seen and supported enough to keep trying, our staff feel they've done their job. And when a youth graduates from drug court, crime, and drug-free, with their family proud and happy alongside them, the world shines for our staff. I'm very proud of the Washington County Juvenile Department staff. I'm deeply honored to be working alongside them, and I greatly appreciate the support of the board and the county that you've given to our staff and department in this important work, and want to thank you for the proclamation in time this morning.
Thank you, Lynn. Mr. Berger, Steve Berger.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the support of the work that we do. My name is Steve Berger, Director of Adult Community Corrections for Washington County. I'm proud of our community corrections team and appreciate the opportunity to recognize our department professionals working to hold offenders accountable and make victims whole. They do amazing work and keep our communities safe, especially now during the current environment of the COVID pandemic. This week, people across the United States and Canada will join together to recognize the work that probation, parole, and community supervision professionals do for our public safety system. The theme for Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week is Restoring Trust and Creating Hope. Working together makes for stronger bonds between colleagues, community partners, and with those under community supervision. Today in America, there's over 5 million adults on community supervision. Community corrections professionals are true agents of change and often silent partners, yet we spend more time with our clients than most other agencies. Our community corrections department employs 133 professionals, supervising over 3,200 adults on probation, parole, and post-prison supervision here in Washington County. We carry out our community supervision and monitoring through our Community Corrections Center, counseling and victim services, and probation and parole field supervision activities such as home contacts, drug testing, making sure those under supervision attend counseling sessions, and helping them find suitable housing and employment. Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week is a time to celebrate and honor these dedicated professionals in our community who work tirelessly to assist offenders in becoming better citizens and who work to make our neighborhoods safer and more vibrant places to live. and more vibrant places to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you to each of you. Commissioners, before we ask them to read the proclamation, do you have any questions?
Great job.
Okay. If you would, please read the proclamation today.
Thank you. Whereas adult and juvenile community supervision is an essential part of the justice system, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals recognize the disparate impact the justice system has had on our Black and Indigenous people of color and those who have been historically marginalized and advocate for equitable and fair treatment for all, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals advocate for community and restorative justice, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities, and now therefore be it resolved that on this 21st day of July 2020, the Washington Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 19 through 25 as Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week, and encourage all citizens to honor these community corrections and juvenile justice professionals and to recognize their achievements.
Thank you for reading that. What are the wishes of the Board of Commissioners?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt today's proclamation. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I can thank you.
The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Are there any closing commissioner thoughts?
Yeah, I would, you know, I sit on the two boards with both of you, and it's always encouraging to me to hear your reports and desire, I guess, to make things better for folks, especially in our juvenile population that struggled and continue to struggle, and your commitment to them and to the process. So just thank you very much for what you do, and keep up the good work. It's an education process for me, so I love to come and just hear what you have to say and what plans you have. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to also say thank you, and please extend my thanks, I'm certain, from the whole board, to all of the supervisors and the work that they do.
Thank you.
Yes.
We will do that.
Normally, we have a barbecue, and we invite all of you, but alas, not today.
More important that everyone stay safe and healthy in their continued incredible work for our community. So thank you so much.
I do miss the barbecue, though.
Yeah. There'll be more.
We miss cooking.
Next year, next year.
Thank you.
We're going to hold out for next year. Thank you so much for being here and reading that for us, and your statements in advance as well. The next item on our agenda is to announce vacancies on the county boards and commissions. So at this time, I would like to highlight to our community that we are looking to recruit you to help advise us. These are board-appointed advisory committees. Aging and Veteran Services Advisory Committee, we have seven positions available now. The Board of Property Tax Appeals, six positions available now. Civil Service Commission, two positions available. The Columbia Pacific Economic Development District, also known as COLPAC, Commissioner Willie serves on that, there are two positions available. The Fairgrounds Advisory Committee, we have three positions available. The Homeless Plan Advisory Committee, also known as HPAK, has two positions. The Housing Advisory Commission Committee, known as HAC, has two positions. The Metzger Park Local Improvement District Advisory Committee has six positions. The North Bethany County Service District for Roads Budget Committee has two positions available. The Northwest Area Commission on Transportation, known as Northwest Act, has two positions available. The Park and Recreation Advisory Board has eight positions. Planning Commission, one. The Public Safety Coordinating Council, one. The Rural Road Operations and Maintenance Advisory Committee, also known as ROMAC, has two positions. And then for budgets, the Washington County and the Service District for Lighting Number One Budget Committee has a position open. The West Slope Library, Community Library Advisory Committee has one position open. You can find more information about these committees in our meeting packet for today, but also on our county website. That's co.washington.or.us. And so that's that for the announcement. Next on our agenda are public hearings. We have a half dozen of these today. The first one is related to Clean Water Services. So as per usual, since this is not a land use one, do we still have to read this one by title only? Do we have to have a motion on that?
This is Clean Water Services. It's an ordinance. It doesn't follow the county charter, so I'll leave it to the Clean Water Services people to provide advice about that, but.
Okay. So we're going to first have a staff report, and this is to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution and order approving the Clean Water Services Pay Plan for Nonrepresented and Represented Employees for Fiscal Year 2020 through 2021. And Ms. Holly Dobler of Employee and Labor Relations for Clean Water Services is here with us for a staff report.
Madam Chair Harrington, Vice Chair Rogers, and Commissioners, thank you for having me today.
Scouton's now.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, you're right. It rotates every year.
My name's Holly Dobler. I'm the Human Resources and Risk Management Director for Clean Water Services. First, I'd like to start by acknowledging the employees at Clean Water Services. They are collaborative, innovative, and hardworking individuals who provide services to the community. I'd like to thank all of the employees for the work that they do. The item before you is a public hearing to adopt resolution and order approving Clean Water Services Pay Plan for Nonrepresented and Represented Employees for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021. As required in the district's employment policies and guidelines, the district is recommending that the Board adopt the pay plan establishing salaries for nonrepresented and represented employees based on the adopted budget on June 23, 2020. Both pay plans represent a 2% increase to the market points in the salary ranges. The district utilizes a performance-based pay compensation system, and employees may receive pay increases through the annual performance appraisal process. District employees do not receive an automatic cost-of-living adjustment, nor do they receive step increases. Therefore, no individual increases will occur as a result of the range movement. Any questions?
I'm not seeing any questions. So without further ado, I'm going to open a public hearing on this item. Mr. Moss, is there anyone who has signed up?
We have no one, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room? No one in the room, so we'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the commission related to this resolution and order to approve the Clean Water Services Pay Plan for Nonrepresented and Represented Employees for Fiscal Year 2020 through 2021?
Move to adopt.
We have a motion, and would one of them seconds it? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is to consider the annexation of one parcel and right-of-way totaling 28 acres to Clean Water Services. We have Andy Back here for a staff report. Welcome, Andy.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. We have actually four annexations for you ultimately here, so hopefully Brian Robb is online and can do the presentation.
He is for you. Brian, can you hear us? Brian, you're still muted.
Brian, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
And we can hear you. Yes, welcome. It's good to hear your voice.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Brian Robb, Associate Planner with Community Planning. The annexation before you today, case file number 20-006, is a request by LC Vineyard LLC to annex one property and right-of-way located on Southwest Horse Tail Drive totaling approximately 28 acres into Clean Water Services. The property is located within the city of Beaverton, which is in, which has endorsed this annexation. As discussed in the staff report dated July 6, 2020, the annexation was requested by the applicant through the double-majority annexation method and requires two hearings. The second hearing is scheduled for August 18, 2020. Based on the facts and findings of the staff report, staff recommends that the Board conduct the public hearing to consider the annexation of the subject property into Clean Water Services. At the conclusion of the hearing, continue the hearing to August 18, 2020. With that, I'll conclude my staff report and can answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Seeing none, I'm going to open a public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to testify?
There is not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, at this point, we're going to continue the public hearing until August 18.
So move, Madam Chair.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. And now, we'll move on to the next. Consider the annexation of one parcel and right-of-way totaling 28 acres to Clean Water Why do we have two of these? Oh, I have two of these in my book. Excuse me. My mistake. We're going to consider the annexation of three parcels and right-of-way totaling nine acres to Clean Water Services. Do we have Brian on the line again for a staff report?
This one will be given by Todd Berkowitz, so he should be elevated to a presenter here.
And we have him right there for you, Madam Chair.
Hi, Todd. Can you hear us? We can't hear you yet. Todd, are you there?
And you'll need to unmute. There we go.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Welcome, Todd.
Thank you very much. So I was, we actually have an annexation of three parcels into three different districts, and I was under the understanding that you wanted them all read at the same time. Would you like them done separately or all together?
Can we do three public hearings in one?
Staff report on each one.
I know, but.
That is correct. Yes, you can. You can make testimony on all three at one public hearing.
Terrific. Let's do that. Yes.
Perfect. Great. Well, good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Todd Berkowitz, Associate Planner with Land Use and Transportation. The annexations before you today, case file numbers 20-007, 20-008, and 20-009, a request by Hartwell Homes and Sky Homage Investments LLC to annex three parcels on Northwest Liddlaw Road and a portion of right-of-way on Northwest 124th Avenue totaling approximately nine acres into Clean Water Services, Twelton Hills Park and Recreation District, and Twelton Valley Water District. Based on the facts and findings in the July 6, 2020, staff report, staff recommends that the Board adopt the resolution and orders approving these annexations with the approval becoming effective immediately. If there is any public testimony provided today other than the applicant's, there is a brief statement that I will need to read into record. With that, I'll conclude my staff report and can answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on these three annexations? Three service district annexations for the same property? Nope. Seeing none, we'll open a public hearing. Mr. Moss?
We have no one, Madam Chair.
No one has signed up to testify in this public hearing. Is there anyone in the room? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. What are the...
[inaudible]
This will be for items C, D, and E.
Madam Chair, you'll need separate votes on the different items.
Darn. We can only be so expedient. Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion for annexing for Clean Water Services, and we now have a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. So now, moving on to the next service district. We've done Clean Water Services. How about for Twelton Hills Park and Rec? Unfortunately, your mic wasn't on, so I don't know if the audio picked that up, but to summarize, Commissioner Scouton moved for the motion for item 6D. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. And now to the third service district, Twelton Valley Water District. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve requested action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the annexation of these three parcels and right-of-way totaling nine acres to Twelton Valley Water District. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you. Boy, it's nice when we can.
Thank you.
We can take that action. Thank you very much, Mr. Berkowitz. Todd Berkowitz was here with us online. And now, we're into the home stretch on our public hearings. We have just one more, and this is related to an ordinance for land use and transportation. Yes, indeed, ladies and gentlemen, we are definitely in our ordinance season. So this is for proposed ordinance, well, actually, Andy Back is here, so I'll let him take it away and tell us what we're here for.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Last week at the work session, you heard about the cider businesses.
Can I interrupt you just two seconds?
Sure.
Shouldn't we read by title only?
Yes, we should.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Oh, I thought we got a staff report, and then we did it by title only.
You can do it either way, but typically, we read by title only at the start of the...
Okay. Great. We have a motion to read the ordinance by title only. Is there, and seconded. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we can have a staff report. Oh, right, you have to read it by title only. God, I'm trying to be expedient here.
Orders number 864, an ordinance amending the Community Development Code relating to cider businesses and farm brewery standards.
Thank you, Mr. Raplié. Now, Andy Back.
Last week at your work session, you heard about the cider businesses and farm brewery ordinances. Karine Arindes hopefully is online, and she'll do the staff report.
She is.
And we can even see her today. Hello there.
Thanks, Andy. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. I am Karine Arindes, Associate Planner in Community Planning, here to present the staff report for ordinance number 864, which is cider businesses and farm brewery standards. Next slide, please. So just to recap and talk about why we are here, making these changes to the CDC, the Community Development Code. The state did make some changes to require counties to permit cider businesses in 2017 and farm breweries in 2019. And in this year's Long Range Planning Work Program, we did... And in this year's Long Range Planning Work Program, we did consider whether to make Community Development Code amendments to address these state law changes, and the board did adopt that and authorize that change. And so, this ordinance is very limited in scope to making the changes in our code that would incorporate the changes in state law. Next slide, please. So, where these changes would apply, so they are very specific to the county's exclusive farm use areas, which are located in two land use districts. That's the exclusive farm use district and the agricultural and forest district, AF20. They're shown in the slide here in the two darkest gray tones, kind of in the central portion of the county. Next slide. So, I'm going to start with an overview of the proposed amendments, and most of the provisions are the same for both the cider business and the farm brewery uses. So, the amendments allow you to establish a facility to produce and process alcoholic beverages, which includes activities such as bottling, shipping, and marketing your beverages. It also allows for related activities and uses, including sales of incidental items, which are subject to some income restrictions. And this is very similar to what's required for standard wineries. And then, the cider facility or brewery and any gathering places on the site are subject to a 100-foot setback, as well as access requirements. Both of these are for the purpose of limiting conflicts with farm and practices on adjacent lands. Next slide. So now, I'll be going into a little bit more detail. These items are covered in the order. They're discussed in our staff report in the analysis section for anybody who might be watching at home or in the auditorium, and that's also the way they're presented in the exhibit of the CDC changes as well. So, in order to establish one of these production facilities, the operation needs to meet certain standards to be able to qualify. The cider thresholds are less than 100,000 gallons coupled with 15 acres of fruit production that can be onsite, off-site, or a combination. Or, if you're going to produce more than 100,000 gallons, then you need to have access to 40 acres of fruit. And this is consistent with the standards for standard wineries. The farm brewery thresholds are different, and they're intended to kind of limit the allowance to smaller craft brewers, so not the Budweisers of the brewing industry. And so, there is a kind of total cap of the operation, whether that's onsite or in other locations, cannot produce more than 150,000 barrels to qualify. And on the farm site, they're capped at 15,000 barrels, and they must have access to a hop farm of at least 15 acres. And again, that can be off-site, onsite, or a combination. Next slide, please. So, if you're going to establish one of these facilities, you're also allowed to have related activities and uses. And I want to stress here that these are related to the product that you're producing in your facility. And so, this could be tastings, tours of the site, cider maker or brewer dinners, club events. It also includes things like tasting rooms and charitable events, as long as you're not charging a facility fee. And then, in order to be able to serve alcohol at these events, you really, and to comply with OLCC standards, you really do need to have some sort of food service, so limited service kitchen facilities are also allowed. Next slide. So, there is an additional related use that is allowed, and that is a bed and breakfast that can be permitted through home occupation permit. And so, those are good for two years, and then must be renewed. The accommodations are limited to providing services to five people or fewer. And just like any other home occupation, they're intended to allow in-home business activities, and there are a number of clear and objective standards to limit impacts, such as limitation to the exterior appearance of the home, the provision of onsite parking, and prohibitions on noise and noxious odors that are applied to these uses. In addition, these uses must also comply with the farm and forest impact tasks. And then, the dwelling structure itself is also subject to limitations that apply in EFU and AF20, which limit the ability to establish a dwelling. And then, of course, they would also be subject to building code requirements. Next slide. So, a number of uses that are allowed with these facilities are subject to income restrictions. And so, a number of the uses I've already talked about that relate to marketing or the sales of items that are incidental to the products produced onsite are subject to the standard, including food or other beverages. So, like if you were a cider maker and you're selling some wine, or vice versa. Then, there's also a limit to what you can earn from your agritourism events, which I'll be covering on the next slide. And what this restriction does is cap the income from these sales to 25% of the total onsite product sales. Next slide, please. So, these other events, agritourism or other commercial events, they do not have to relate to the products made on the site. So, common examples of this are birthday parties or weddings. And during the review, which is an additional review on top of being permitted, your facility will review the applicant's site plan, and kind of based on what they propose, we can establish some conditions. But the kinds of conditions that we can apply through this process is somewhat limited by the state laws. So, they include things like the number of event attendees, hours of event operation, access and parking, which we would all do based on what the applicant is telling us they want to do. And then, we may also apply additional conditions, which require some follow-up with other parties for traffic management, noise management, sanitation, and solid waste. Next slide. So, this review of others is not limited to these additional commercial events that require special review. So, many of these uses do require permitting or inspection by other parties, including everybody's going to have to go talk to the water master and talk about their water supply, because this is the rural area. There is no provision of public water. Everybody's going to have to get an access permit, and that ensures that there's a safe access onto our rural roads. But if you're also proposing events where you might need to get out there and manage traffic, you might need an additional permit. And then, Health and Human Services are going to be looking at solid waste and wastewater, your septic system. And then, there might be additional permitting or inspections required if you're providing food service or accommodations. Next slide, please. So, kind of a summary of everything we just talked about. So, the CDC code changes would allow folks to establish cider business or farm brewery uses, which include additional allowances for tasting rooms, limited kitchen facilities, related promotional activities. These aren't limited in number, and charitable events, as well as a home occupation bed and breakfast, and then a limited number of agritourism or other commercial events that are subject to additional review. Next slide. So, our planning commission held their hearing on June 17. They did hear in favor of adoption by the Northwest Cider Association. There was a comment from one of our urban CPOs who didn't really have knowledge of this ordinance, but that's probably because we focused our outreach in the rural area, contacting all of the rural CPOs, as well as local farm operators and the Farm Bureau. And during the deliberations portion of the planning commission hearing, they didn't raise any concerns about that. They did kind of discuss the purpose of the EFU land use district and how a lot of those related activities are secondary uses. And then, they also talked just kind of generally about the restrictive nature of the state law for this use, as well as certain other rural uses. And ultimately, they did make a recommendation that this board go ahead and adopt as filed, and that was a unanimous decision. Next slide, please. So, our recommendation today is that the board conduct the public hearing as noticed and then adopt the ordinance as filed, as well as adopt the associated findings by a separate resolution and order. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the process or the information presented about the ordinance. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this ordinance? We don't have any questions from commissioners, so I think we'll be able to move to a public hearing. So, I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Moss, do we have anyone signed up to testify?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone in the room here to testify on this ordinance, so we're going to close the public hearing.
Move for adoption, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 864 and the associated findings. Roll call vote, please.
We have a second.
Yeah, Pam did it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pam.
It's okay. I appreciate it.
Down here, down here.
It's great.
Commissioner Willie.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Treese.
Aye.
Vice Chair Scouten.
Aye.
Chair Harrington.
Aye. And the ordinance passes unanimously five to... Oh, those were all in favor. So, the motion passes unanimously five to zero, and I didn't need to check to see if anyone was opposed. And we adopted the findings per the motion on the ordinance, but I think we still have to do the resolution and order to adopt the findings for ordinance number 864.
Move to... Go ahead.
Commissioner?
All right. Well, I'll move that we approve findings for ordinance number 864.
So, since the microphone was off, Commissioner Scouten...
All right, I'll try it again. It's just, I like to leave the button off when I'm not using it, and then I forget to turn it on, so my apologies. Adopt the findings. I move that we adopt the findings for orders number 864 and authorize the chair to sign the resolution and order, memorializing the actions.
Second. Thank you, Commissioners. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And it's always important to get ordinances, land use ordinances especially, correct procedurally.
Thank you for your work on this.
So, thank you all, and thank you to staff for joining us today. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, I interrupted you, and I apologize.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just saying thank you, but I stepped over you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to the last action item for today's agenda, and that is to declare an emergency related to COVID-19, or more to the point, to continue our emergency declaration. Now, for an extension of the emergency through August 18, 2020, under Washington County Code Chapter 8.36, to support response activities to this new coronavirus known as COVID-19. What are the wishes of the commission?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners, and to our public, it's very important that we have these emergency declarations in order to continue our community-serving work during this public health crisis, and certainly with the associated economic crisis. The next item on our agenda is our second oral communications period of the meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and testify before the board for up to five minutes each, or groups to for 10 minutes. Mr. Moss, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing... We have no one signed up for oral communications today. Next item on the agenda is board announcements. I'll kick it off with announcing that next Tuesday, July 28, we'll be having a work session in the afternoon, starting at 2:00 p.m., and an evening board meeting, starting at 6:00 p.m. All of the details, including our Zoom announcements, on the county website, co.washington.or.us. The following week, Tuesday, August 4, we'll have a work session, starting at 8:30 and a board meeting at 10:00. The following Thursday, we currently have a roundtable scheduled, starting at 10:00 a.m. Though, we might reschedule that. We're exploring rescheduling that date so that we can align, so that Commissioners can take their vacation breaks appropriately. That's underway. If we don't reschedule it, it would be Thursday, August 6. Following Tuesday, August 11, is an extended work session only. We do not have a business meeting that day. And then, Tuesday, August 18, once again, the dynamic duo of the work session at 8:30 and the board meeting at 10 o'clock. Are there any other commissioner announcements? Seeing none, how about adjournment? What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning today's Washington County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Goodbye, everyone. See you next Tuesday. And we'll reconvene in a work session at 1:00. Have a good lunch.
I'm not sure where that is exactly, but I can find it.